Before I'm being present, I'll call the meeting, the first meeting of the Brea City Council for 2011 to order. Before we begin our regular business, I would like to recognize the vacant seat of Howard Baker, who died December 31, and extend our collective condolences to his wife Peggy, his son Jason, his daughter Megan, and his daughter Kristen, and all of his other family members. He will be missed. Howard Baker was a dedicated public servant. First with the United States Navy in Vietnam, then for 25 years as postmaster of Brea, and finally, for 15 years as a member of Brea City Council. Only death could prevent him from serving his adopted town for another two years. During his time on city council, he distinguished himself by his advocacy of projects, ranging from support of the new pool in 1992, and the Jill Jane Connector at Walmart in 2007, to the sidewalks on Jefferson Street, and the traffic signal that some had facetiously said should be named the Howard Baker Memorial Traffic Signal at the intersection of Jefferson Street and Ellipse. Distinguished himself by his willingness to compromise for the greater public good, even though he was convinced that his way was definitely better, and his courage to serve for many years as the council representative on the Brea Planning and Zoning Commission, and to make the hard votes in council even at the expense of losing his seat in the next election. And so, as we open this meeting without him, let it be known that the mayor, city council, and city staff extend to Howard's family our sincere appreciation and deepest respect for his many years of consistent service as a member of this community. And with that, I would also like to extend a warm welcome to our newly elected council, all six, seven of you. And recognize any visitors who are here and would like to bring a council, bring a matter to this council that is not otherwise on the agenda. Seeing none, would just like to greet Lavoide Huggins. Say hello, welcome, glad you're here. Mr. Huggins is the now-not-so-new Public Safety Director at Brea College. We're glad to have you. Is there anything you would like to say, or are you just glad to be here? Well, welcome, good to see you. If the council would at this time turn its attention to the minutes of the December 21 meeting, are there changes? Motion by Mr. Burnside to adopt the minutes as distributed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, who is it, Mr. Waiters? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Minutes are approved as distributed. Next, open the bids, residential and commercial waste collection and disposal. We have four bids, the first being Rumkey. It's a very comprehensive bid here. Where you got your numbers?
They start on page 41.
Where do they end?
About right in the middle.
Okay, thank you, that was a help. Forty-one, yeah, okay. I'm just gonna read as an example, a consistent example. Residential, curbside garbage collection, monthly fee, $10.76. That's Rumkey. There are numerous aspects to this, to these bids, but to give an example, that's Rumkey. Next is Violia. Violia, curbside garbage collection, monthly fee, $7.77. There's a lot more to it than that, though. Third is Republic Services of Kentucky, also known as M&amp;M Sanitation, maybe? Curbside garbage collection, monthly fee, $14.10. Fourth and last bid, Waste Connections Inc. Goes by the name of Legacy? Okay. Generating a lot of waste here, opening up these. Five, thank you. Oh, yeah, price. Yeah, thank you. Curbside garbage collection, monthly, $8.35. So, without objection, these bids will be turned over to city staff to evaluate and prepare a recommendation to the finance committee. Part of that evaluation, I understand, will be to receive presentations from various, or at least invite presentations from the various bidders to allow for thorough understanding of equipment, service, locations, make sure we understand completely the bids. So, without objection, these will be turned over and bidders will be contacted in the future. This week?
Tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Next, new business. City Attorney, I mean, City Administrator.
At this evening on your agenda, an item of orientation. As our intent in this meeting this evening, and next meeting, two weeks from now, is to allow each department head to introduce themselves to you and to go through a synopsis or an explanation of their department and what they do and those people who serve under them. We have an organizational chart for the governmental aspect along with tourism on the wall, if you want to take a look at that, how we're broken down and how many positions that we have. Mr. Blackburn will be making a presentation at the next meeting, and at that time, he will have displayed an organizational chart for our utilities. This evening, I'll make a few comments, and I'll be followed by David Gregory of Police, Roy Curtis, Fire, Del Van Winkle for Codes, Paul Schrader, GIS, and Tom McKay, Economic Development. Think you all know who I am. I have served as, in the office of City Administrator now, for 13 years and one month. Some of us here, myself and Mr. Gilbert and Ms. Bye, have the honorable distinction of being the longest-serving ones on the, in these positions, which has been a real honor, especially to me. I'll let you think about the names, but Steve came in the other morning and he said, "You know, one of the qualifications for being a City Administrator of Brea," and I thought, "Nah, what is it?" And he said, "Your name has to start with S.T." So, I'll let you all think about that, and then we'll talk about that later. I have been in this job for 13 years. I served on the Brea City Council for nine years. Six of those years, I served on the Planning and Zoning Committee. Two years when the, I was not elected to the council, I served as chairman of the Community Services Committee that Mayor Kirby at that time established, and that's the two years that helped with the building of the park and swimming pool in that area, and also, we purchased the Folk Center by, through that committee, working with the council at that time. Spent 20 years with Dresser Industries, working from the purchasing department through the engineering department, and spent a few years as general foreman at the plant. The Brea city staff and I want to welcome each of you as city council members. Undoubtedly, you'll find this experience very rewarding and sometimes very frustrating. The city of Brea operates as a fourth-class city under granted powers of home rule using the mayor-council form of government with the position of city administrator established by ordinance. The distinguishing characteristics of the mayor-council form of city government is the clear separation of powers between the executive or mayor and the legislative, the city council, branches of government. All of the executive and administration authority is vested by statute in the mayor, KRS 83A. The powers and authority of the city council are as follows. Number one, enact ordinances. Two, enact all codes. Three, provide sufficient revenue to operate city government through the adoption of annual budget ordinance and by levying all taxes and establishing all fees and charges for city services. Four, to establish by ordinance compensation for all elected and appointed officials and employees of the city. Number five, may investigate all activities of city government. Number six, may override mayoral votes by the affirmative of one more than a majority of the council membership. Seven, may appoint a new mayor or council member if a vacancy occurs in the office. Eight, may remove elected officers for misconduct, inability, or willful neglect of service. Nine, may change the manner of electing city officers by adopting the nonpartisan, which we have, form of government. May divide the city into wards for the purpose of electing council members. And 11, approve the appointment of non-elected city officials. The city council is expressly prohibited from performing any executive or administrative function unless those functions have been assigned to it by statute. With few exceptions, the council is focused on performing the legislative function. The day-to-day operation of the city is divided into the operations of 11 departments: Administration, Finance, Police, Fire, Streets, Codes, Parks, GIS, Economic Development, Utilities, and Tourism. The Utilities and Tourism Departments operates by the use of user fees or levied tax. Therefore, those two entities have their own funds, which show both revenue and expenses expressed in those funds. All of the other departments operate out of the general fund. Revenues for the general fund budget are largely made up of the occupational license fees, property tax, insurance tax, franchise fees, and net profit fees. The daily operation of these departments report to the city administrator. The mayor is updated daily. The staff meets each and every Monday morning, with the exception of holidays, along with the mayor. In these sessions, we report on all projects, agree on actions to be taken during the coming week, and we're updated on the financial status of the city. We do encourage the council to be a part of those meetings. The staff also meets the first and third Wednesdays of each month so that we can take care of any matters that may be discussed in a council meeting. My office, along with the mayor's office, has an open-door policy, and communication among our officers and staff is held in high regard. In other words, we keep each other informed. We also keep the council informed both by written or oral reports, and should you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. I'll provide a response as soon as possible. We'll break there. I have basically office hours from 7:30 in the morning till 6:30 to 7 o'clock each day, with the exception of meetings such as this evening. You're encouraged at any point in time to come in and to talk and to ask questions or as, ride around and see what happens in the community. Also, we'd ask if you have requests from any of your constituents that have talked to you, bring those requests to me. That way, we can get them on to the department heads, get them on schedules to have things done. And also, if it's a question, why did something happen? Why are you doing certain things? We can bring the department heads in, and either the department head or myself will get back with you with an answer. In addition to the city's 11 departments, legal counsel is secured through a contract. JT Gilbert is the city's corporation counsel and served the city for more than 34 years. Mr. Gilbert is presently in his fourth year of a seven-year contract. The city's engineering services is contracted to CDP engineers. CDP has contracted with the city for more than 15 years. CDP engineers provides engineering services for such projects as roads, parks, and services, also serves as technical advisor to our planning commission. Property and casualty insurance is provided by Travelers Insurance through Nice Lucans of Lexington. Health insurance is contracted to Bluegrass Family Health. Dental insurance is contracted to Delta Dental of Kentucky. Our life insurance and long-term disability is contracted to Lincoln Financial Services. The city is a member of the county employee retirement system, and our retirement program is classified as non-hazardous. The city's employees' benefit program has several components. Full-time employees are provided health, dental, and life insurance paid by the city. The city also pays for one-half of an employee's family plan for health and dental insurance. Each employee has a life insurance policy of at least $75,000, and the city provides long-term disability for the first five years of employment. After five years, the employee is vested in CERS, and disability is provided through the retirement system. Employees can also choose to participate in the Brea Credit Union and also make contribution to a 457 plan through VALEC. As a city council member, one of your first responsibilities will be to address the strategic plan. The strategic planning process affords each council member the opportunity to assess our community as you work through the environmental scan, listing both strengths and weaknesses as you work toward action items and goals for the management of the city. The length of this particular meeting, we haven't set a date yet, will range from four to five hours. This is an excellent time for the elected officials to agree on action items and also is the beginning of the budgetary process for the next fiscal year. Our staff will be noting those things that are highlighted as action items. The city staff at that meeting will be present as listeners and to provide information when called upon. Normally, the mayor presides and moderates that meeting. The most important item of any given year is the presentation of the fiscal budget. The city's fiscal year begins July 1st. The budget is the backbone of the city's present and future and, if you will, the bible by which the staff members live. The budgeting process is somewhat long and drawn out, but when it's finished, the Audit and Finance Committee and other members of council and staff are very familiar with the planned revenues and expenditures for that coming year. The budget process is as follows. Personnel-related costs are determined by percentages of total rise to payroll. Benefit costs, including health, dental, and CERS, are figured first. Capital purchases are listed with cost and presented to the city administrator. Departmental capital purchases are reviewed by the city administrator and discussed with each department head. Each staff member constructs their own departmental budget using the personnel costs and capital costs provided. The city administrator and finance director determines the anticipated amount of revenue. The city administrator and finance director reviews each departmental budget with the appropriate staff member. Fund 35, which you'll become familiar with as the Capital Project Fund, is constructed by the city administrator with input from the mayor, council, and appropriate staff members. All special funds are prepared by the city administrator in conjunction with the appropriate staff member. Tourism budget is reviewed by, is done by the Tourism Commission, Tourism Director, and I also sit in on those meetings. The utility budget is prepared by the Utility Director and his staff and presented to the city administrator. Also, during this process, each department head submits a five-year capital plan for their department. The finance director, once we have all this together and we've met with each of our department heads and we're satisfied with the budget, the finance director then completes the budget, gets all the summary sheets and everything in preparation to send out to the finance committee, and when we send out the budget to the finance committee, each and every council member receives a copy at the same time. Once the budget document is gone through the finance committee, we're settled on the budget, the budget document is approved, and the ordinance then is drafted, and it takes two readings before passage. This process must be completed prior to the second meeting in June. The approved budget ordinance must be published in the paper record before July 1. The fiscal year ends June 30. At the close of the fiscal year, the prior year's budget stands ready for audit. Ray Foley, Hensley &amp; Company is a contracted outside auditor. Results of the audit are made public in October. Our audits are comprehensive, including audits of procedures and internal controls. In December and January of each year, and we're working on this now, the staff prepares an amended budget using most of the steps listed above. The process, purpose of the amended budget is to make sure that all departments and special funds have sufficient monies to cover expected expenditures. The amended budget is presented to the Audit and Finance Committee, reviewed by the committee and council, and the amended budget ordinance is then prepared. On Friday, and this is a little information for you all, on Friday, prior to each council meeting, you will receive a packet delivered to your home. And if you want it delivered someplace else, at a business or place at work, you just please let us know. Packet contains the agenda along with the sporting documentation, ordinances and resolutions, and reports from department heads. All of our meetings are open, with the exception of an executive session. Executive sessions are called to discuss personnel, legal matters, or purchase of property. Executive sessions are closed to the press and the public. Most all executive sessions are for the purpose of discussing one topic, and the mayor will report the results of that meeting when the council goes into open session. The city administrator is present at these meetings. As council members, you are, may be approached by the press for interviews concerning council items. This is an appropriate role for both the council members and also the press. We do encourage you, if we're in a legal situation, that may be something that we want to talk about before we talk about it in public. As members of the Brea City Council, you're compensated at a rate of $400 per month. You will receive one check per month and will be directly deposited into your checking account, as with all city employees. The compensation's not just for the two hours that you'll spend or more hours in regular meetings, but also for your time and efforts each and every day. Again, I want to welcome you as members of the Brea City Council. I'm available to answer any questions or provide any information that you may need or require throughout your term, and I do look forward to working with each other.
Would you, would you make somewhat of a distinction there between the CCRS, is what the county?
County Retirement System is through the state, and we start with, our employees are vested in five years, we're non-hazardous.
And make that distinction there, hazard and non-hazard.
Hazardous is, covers, especially in city government, would be covering your police and fire. It is made for like a 20-year retirement with full benefits. Brea's never participated in that, simply because of cost. And it wasn't something that we looked at as a, but as we have grown and as you've seen all of the problems that our state budget pension plans are having, it's becoming a real, we will have a 2.02, I think if that's right, well lower 2% increase in our contribution this year to CERS. By state law, each employee pays 5% of their wages in the CERS. The remaining portion, every two years, the state legislature determines what the city will pay. And it's gone up over 9% in the last five years for the city's portion, and we have no control on that. So, that's one of the reasons that we look at what CERS costs are going to be, what health insurance costs are going to be before we make a recommendation as to overall raises for employees.
Thank you. Would you explain, Mr. Stone, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jim.
Would you explain the legal process for replacing Mr. Baker? Many people are asking and wondering.
I will refer that to the mayor. I think he may talk about that here in a few minutes, but I'll allow him to do that.
Fair enough.
Back to the pension plan, a third-class city is required for the pension plan, is that correct?
They were, they were, and you... They were, they were, and years passed, if you were first, second, or third, you're required. There has now been a change in state law, and you can make a determination or choice. And many of our cities now are even on new hires that have hazardous employee benefits are now choosing non-hazardous simply because of cost.
That's twenty-seven years opposed to twenty, is it?
No, I think it's up to about thirty now, Donna. New hires, is it thirty years?
Thirty, okay.
Thirty, yeah. So now, they're making changes every legislative.
But everybody has a choice now, even third, second, everybody has a choice now.
And we'll go further into that as we talk through the budget.
Good afternoon, council. First of all, for behalf of all the Brea Police Department employees, we want to welcome each of you newly-elected officials to the council. This evening, I want to talk a little bit about the organization and what the Brea Police Department does for the community and the service that we provide. First of all, I'll start off a little bit about a biography about me that some of you may not know. Been employed with the city of Brea since nineteen ninety-eight. Have a bachelor's degree from Eastern Kentucky University in Police Studies. I'm also an FBI National Academy graduate. Happily married for eight years to my wife, and we have three children, Jacob Dalton and Haley. Some of my hobbies include NASCAR events and jogging. You'll occasionally see me jogging up and down the street, so. Also in my career, I've been fortunate enough to start as a police officer, like I said, in nineteen ninety-eight. I moved up through the ranks. I was a sergeant in two thousand and two, made the rank of lieutenant in two thousand and four. Also have career development certificates as a supervisor in police, a management certificate, and an executive certificate. Also was the police department's first accident reconstructionist in the department. Whoops, wrong one, sorry. I'll talk a little bit about the organization, how it's broken down. Of course, you have a chief of police, we have two captains, we have three lieutenants, four sergeants, two detectives, and one of those detectives is assigned to the Central Kentucky Drug Task Force. We have two school resource officers, one at Brea Community School, the other one at Madison Southern High School. We have one records clerk, one administrative assistant, fifteen police officers, and currently right now, we have one open vacancy for a police officer. We are open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We provide service to our communities. Also, I want to talk a little bit about the training year that we had in twenty-ten. As you may know, each sworn full-time employee is required by KRS to attend forty hours of in-service training per year. Last year, for the police department, we had two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two hours of in-service training for the whole organization. We had seven hundred and twenty-four in-house training hours, and that includes firearms training, tasers, baton, anything that's covered inside our own department with our own instructors. We did two hundred and thirty-two hours of online training. That includes the breadth instrument that we do, that includes our mobile data terminals, recertification through our National Crime Information Center that we have to be certified in. So all in total, we've done, for the year, three thousand nine hundred and eighteen hours of training. To give you some perspective of what that is, one full-time employee works two thousand and eighty hours a year. So basically, what that would do, take one and a half officers off the road and say, okay, you're doing training five hours a day, or five days a week, eight hours a day. That's all you do, and it would take us one and a half employees. This keeps going the wrong way, sorry. Okay. Give you some of our programs that we do, that you may not be familiar with. Since becoming chief in two thousand and nine, I started a bike patrol program back. We were shorthanded and kind of didn't participate in it, but I've gotten it back. We use it real strongly during the summer and spring months at the park. We just completed our second five-year term for accredited through the Kentucky Association Chiefs of Police. In total, there's seventy-seven law enforcement agencies in Kentucky that are accredited out of the estimated four hundred departments in Kentucky, and that includes county sheriff's departments, airport police, sheriffs, just different police departments. So we're extremely proud of that, to be accredited. It's a very high standard that we have to accomplish. We have a professional standards unit that's operated by two people. Both of them are lieutenants in the department. This unit basically investigates internal complaints against police officers from citizens. If there's a citizen's complaint, then they follow KRS guidelines and investigate that complaint. We have a, of course, with all the training hours, we have to have somebody that does training, and that's all they do, is make sure people are at the right places. We just developed an honor guard program. These people have been to Lexington Police Department to do the training. We have a safety officer program. We currently do not have that field yet, but that person does traffic, you know, accidents, works at the park during the summer and spring, and so forth. We also work with the Kentucky State Police and the FBI with the Internet Crimes Against Children. We're also a member of the Central Kentucky Drug Task Force, which is in Madison County and Estill, Jackson, Garrett, and several, in Rockcastle. We also, I'm a big supporter of the Special Olympics. Last year, we conducted our first ten-k race to benefit Special Olympics. We raised over eighty-five hundred dollars. Like I said before, we have a school resource officers. We also have a Madison County, we participate in Madison County Youth in Action Program, which is the sticker shop where we'll go to Richmond and place labels on different alcoholic beverages for youth. We have also. I'll explain a little bit of our, the budget for the Brea Police Department. It's broken down into three sections. Covers administration is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars roughly, and that's six employees. The patrol budget is a little over two million. That covers twenty-six employees, and we have a capital expense of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, and a lot of those are car replacement to, we have a home fleet program, and of course, we put a lot of miles on cars. Our training budget, believe it or not, is only twenty-nine thousand five hundred to do all that training that we do. So total budget for the Brea Police is two-point-five million, a little over. Give you some statistical information about the department. We answered in two thousand and nine, six, over sixteen thousand calls for service. We did thirty-three, over thirty-three hundred traffic stops. We issued five hundred and forty-six parking tickets. We answered five hundred and thirty alarm calls. We issued two thousand, twenty-four hundred citations. We performed one thousand, over a thousand motorists assist, and a lot of those come from I-75, people needing help. Of course, the population, according to the census, is a little over fourteen thousand, and we cover nine point three-three square miles of coverage in the city. Give you some traffic data from two thousand and nine. We had six hundred and twenty-three collisions in the city. One of those collisions was fatal. Of those collisions, seventy were injury-type collisions, five hundred fifty-two were non-injury. Eleven of those injury and non-injury collisions were alcohol, alcohol, drug impaired type collisions. We had forty hit-and-run collisions, and believe it or not, our largest impact where we have the most accidents is Jill Drive, and that's Walmart parking lot. And also, we have a lot on Richmond Road. It's just generally Richmond Road. To give you some of our crime data information that you may not be aware, in two thousand and nine, we had seven hundred and twenty-eight cases that were opened. We made six hundred and ninety-one arrests. We did eighty-three drug arrests, of those arrests were eighty-three, seventy-four DUI arrests, and seventeen violent crimes. And those, the violent crimes include murders, assaults, aggravated assaults on people. So for the crime index with a population of fourteen thousand so people, that basically means one in point one-four people out of a thousand would be a victim of a violent crime. And you compare that to the national average of four point two-nine, so we're way below. Brea's pretty safe for a violent crime. We had four hundred and thirty-three property crimes in two thousand and nine. Those are burglaries, thefts, larceny, arson falls into that. Brea is twenty-nine point two-zero for out of a thousand people, so thirty people, you put a thousand, thirty of those people would be victims. Of course, we're close to the national average. That's one of the areas that we, and we try to push it in the community, people lock their doors, but we still have a problem with thieving. Just kind of wanted to give you a breakdown of other cities that you know, kind of population size that's compared. Violent crime rate for Somerset is three. Their property crime is forty-one. Richmond's is two-point-seven-one, and Danville's violence two-point. London is just a little bit safer than we are on violent crime, but their property crime is way higher than ours. So, just to give you an idea. Some of the goals that I want to achieve in two thousand and eleven, to top my agenda is a wellness program, not just for the police department, but for the city as a whole. I think it would make our insurance rates go down, not considerably, but it'd take a long time for that to see the effect, but I think it's being fit for all employees. An AED program is the automatic defibrillators. I wrote a grant for St. Joe's Hospital Foundation Grant, received it, got the check, it's for a little over eight thousand dollars to buy these devices and place in all government buildings. I think they're a great life-saving tool, and we need them here in our building, so that's one of my goals for this year. Also want to adopt new policies. One is line-of-duty death. After talking to the honor guard and seeing different agencies that are not prepared for an officer that gets killed in the line of duty, and I hope as chief that that never happens, but we have to prepare for those. And promotional-type policies and so forth. I just purchased last week thirteen personal video cameras for police officers, so that means that every police officer on the department will have a personal video camera that, when they do traffic stops, it's a little device that's on there right here, so they pull it down, and everything is recorded. It's all brought back to the police department, downloaded into our server. They can't not delete the videos, and once they're there, they're there. Want to update some of our investigators' equipment. We're still using cameras that use three-point-five floppy disk. So we've got to purchase some cameras and alternate light sources and so forth. One of the other things that I'm kind of big in is dissemination of information. Usually, police departments are not very good at that. There is two things that I think will help in the community. One is a program called NICSIL, and I will get that information to you later, but it's basically a community alert-type system that people can subscribe to for free. If we have accidents, traffic problems, we can send alerts out. You can get it by email or text on your cellphone. And also, we do have a Facebook page for making community members alert of what's going on in the organization. And another thing is our website needs to be redesigned. It's kind of outdated and behind. It's just very hard to keep track of and get somebody to do that. And one of my other big goals is for, is our Special Olympics race. Like I said, last year, we raised over eighty-five hundred. This year, my goal is over fifteen thousand. So that's basically about the Brea Police Department. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you.
I turn for Chief Ragory. Thank you, chief.
Mayor, city council. I'm Roy Curtis. I was appointed fire chief back in July. I was born in Perth Amboy, New Jersey. We moved to Kentucky when I was three years old and to Brea one year later. I attended Brea Community School and graduated in nineteen seventy-eight. I've worked in construction since I was sixteen years old. My wife, Luanne, and I have been married since nineteen eighty-four. We have two sons, Derek and Gary, and five granddaughters. I became a volunteer in nineteen eighty-one, and I was hired July 1st, nineteen eighty-four as a firefighter for the city of Brea. In February of ninety-seven, I was promoted to lieutenant, and in June of two thousand and three, I was promoted to battalion chief and training officer. And in July of two thousand and ten, I was promoted to chief. Training is a very important part of our job. It continues through your career, and currently to date, I have over forty-three hundred hours of training. Okay, our department, we have two fire stations. One, Station One is located on Chestnut Street at City Hall, and Station Two is located on Glades Road. We have a fifty-six square mile run area. We provide fire protection for some of southern Madison County. Our department consists of nineteen paid firefighters and thirty-two volunteer firefighters, of which twenty-three are active. We operate with three shifts and man two stations twenty-four-seven. Our volunteers have an unmanned station, which is located on Melundy Lane. Our volunteers are fire and rescue and respond as needed. Fire Station One is manned with a battalion chief and two firefighters, and Fire Station Two is manned with a lieutenant and two firefighters. Okay, we have two separate branches of the fire department. One is administrative, and that just has the chief in it at this point, and the other is suppression. As chief, I work a forty-hour week, and I'm subject to call. Some of the responsibilities of chief are to prepare a budget for the department, prepare for future needs of the department, maintain records, deal with the public and personal issues, and monitor the daily activities of the department. Suppression works a fifty-six-hour workweek. They're on for twenty-four hours and off for forty-eight. We keep two fire engines at Station One, and one fire engine, and two tankers, and a ninety-five-foot aerial at Station Two. We have a reserve pumper housed at the utilities building. Both stations have pickups that are used as command vehicles. Our calls have increased over the years, and we currently average around one thousand runs per year. These calls consist of structure fires, vehicle fires, auto accidents, alarms, EMS assists, storm damage, animal calls, and all other emergencies. Firefighters must complete one hundred and fifty hours of training to be a volunteer firefighter, and four hundred hours of training to be a paid firefighter. Volunteers must maintain twenty hours of training per year, and paid firefighters must maintain one hundred hours of training per year. We train in-house and attend fire schools throughout the year. On Thursday nights, we train with our volunteers for two hours. Personnel have yearly physicals to determine that they are fit for duty. To maintain physical fitness, all personnel are required to go to the gym for one hour each shift, and reports and records must be kept for all department activity. Last year, some of our accomplishments were, we replaced one of our older engines. We have improved our fire insurance rating from a four slash nine to a three slash eight B. This was due to our ISO audit in April. This will have the citizens, this will help the citizens in our run area on their insurance premiums. premiums. We maintain all of our trucks, and we have maintained our trainings, certifications, and we continue to train our new volunteers to get them certified. Some of the annual activities that we do throughout the year are inspecting and pre-planning of all businesses in the city. We prepare a new budget for the next year, and testing of all of our fire hose, testing of all of our fire hydrants, pump testing our trucks. And we will have fire prevention classes to follow. And throughout the year, we attend fire schools to achieve more training. But that's pretty much in a nutshell what we do, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions for Chief Curtis.
What's the variety of trucks that you have at the different stations in terms of size, Chief?
The variety?
Pumpers and?
Okay, the pumpers at Station One, we have a city pumper and a county pumper. The county pumper's a little smaller, and it doesn't have the biggest supply lines. It's easier to maneuver in the county. At Station Two, we have a city pumper, and we have two tankers that we use out in the county for an area that doesn't have hydrants. And we also have a ninety-five-foot aerial that we use. And at the utilities building, we store the old engine that was at Station Two and use it as a reserve in case a truck breaks down.
The pumping runs into some interesting issues because the city is served by two water systems. And city, city fire lines can handle the pumper, but there are some issues about the southern Madison lines. Isn't that correct?
So, is that different-sized lines? Like three-inch, seven-inch, eight, ten-inch?
Yes, yeah. The law of the county, the hydrants on southern Madison, they don't do a yearly test and test suppressors and stuff as we do. And ISO, it's debatable if they recognize those in the county because they're not tested yearly, but they give us credit for taking the water with us in the pump or the tankers. With the ISO rating, there's a, it goes down to your manpower, equipment, your responses over the, the year before, and there's a lot of things that they calculate into that to get your rating.
And that helps with the insurance rate?
Yes. Yeah, the lower the number, the better your rating.
Other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. My name is Dale Van Winkle, and I'm with the codes department here in, in Brea. I have been married to my wife, Reva, for about thirty-four years now. We have two children and five grandchildren. I have been employed, in March, I will be with the city twenty-two years. It kind of a story that goes along was that my predecessor, when I came to, the day I came to work, he said, "You'll be lucky if you make it through one year," because that's the average for a codes enforcement officer. But I've been fortunate to make it twenty-two years, and I've really enjoyed my job here at the city. In that time period, I've served for two years as president of the Code Administratives Association of Kentucky. That's over six-hundred-and-fifty members statewide. I've also served one year as president of the Midwest Chapter of the International Code Council. That's over six-thousand members from Ohio, Indiana, Michigan, and Kentucky. And I recently, as of November, completed three years of service on the State of Kentucky Housing Board. I was appointed by the governor in two thousand and seven to that board. That was an enjoyable, we worked with codes, we adopt codes, and if anyone wants a code change, it has to go through that board. So, we were able to work, I get to work with the code in a great way. Some of the earliest codes, I'm sorry, let me go back to my other one here. Some of, codes are not actually new. Some of the earliest codes recorded that we're able to find out of were about five-thousand years ago, and King Hammurabi, a Babylonian, had a set of codes that he had written and actually had a fee schedule that went along with it. You were allowed, you were paid two shekels of silver for a twelve-square-foot of home that you would build, but he had a kind of a strict policy on his enforcement. If you built a house for a man, and that house fell in and it killed the man, then the builder must be killed. If it killed a child, then your child must be killed. If it killed your wife, your wife must be killed. So, they were, kind of had a real strict code policy then, but we're not that strict today. The city of Brea adopted planning and zoning in nineteen-fifty-nine, and then the state of Kentucky adopted a building code in nineteen-seventy-six. If you remember, this was after the tragic Beverly Hills Suffer Club fire up in northern Kentucky. It pushed the state into adopting a building code. And then the city of Brea Codes Office, as it is now, was established in nineteen-eighty-six. The codes department's mission is to enforce a vast number of codes and ordinances to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Brea. We currently consist of a codes and planning administrator, myself, and administrative assistant, which is currently vacant at this time. We are in a search right now. Matter of fact, we're having some preliminary interviews tomorrow on that position. We have, at this time, two, what I call, code enforcement officers. These are multifaceted jobs. Not only is it nuisances, but it's also building inspectors, and they must enter the state, State of Kentucky Certified Building Inspector Program. Used to, you could just about hire anybody to do that, but now the state has really tightened up on that, and you have to have certain criteria in order to even be considered for those positions now. And they, you have to have either a degree in construction work, or you have to have had at least many years of experience as a foreman on a job in construction, and you have to have read blueprints and interpreted those blueprints to be able to build a structure. So, there are certain requirements now. And then we also currently have our electrical inspector. He is a part-time electrical inspector now. We did have a full-time, Lowell Mary, who just recently retired. But his name is Cron Carpenter. Cron is retired from the college. I think he put in about thirty-six years up there, he retired, and now he's our electrical inspector. And something that just took effect as of January the first of this year, we contracted with the state to do all mechanical inspections throughout, because the state started a new program this year where every, every jurisdiction everywhere will have to have their mechanical systems inspected. And if you don't have a local program, the state will inspect it. So, we requested that we be allowed to keep that, and they did contract with us to do the mechanical inspections, and that takes effect one-one of eleven. So, we're, we're into that now.
And that's heating and air?
That's heating and air, dryer vent systems, your, one of the things, builders used to have to put the venting systems in the bathrooms. That's now going to be under the HVAC contractor, because that's considered a mechanical system. So, all those things have to be inspected under the, under the mechanical. One of the things that we're, we're real proud of, we, we too have to be audited by ISO or the insurance services organization, just like the fire department has to be. We had our audit this year, and we worked very hard, and we implemented many new policies to prepare for an audit of that insurance services organization. And the city went from a previous score of ninety-nine in single-family to a four in single-family to help reduce homeowners' insurance and allow this, this was a big one right here, to allow the city to enter into a discount program for flood insurance. Without getting down to a four, we would not have been able to participate in that discount insurance program. And we've got many people who are coming on board for this new flood insurance. So, it's going to give them a break, and we're currently working on, on all that at this time. Here's some of the codes that we do enforce. This is just some of them. Residential, Kentucky Residential, Kentucky Building, International Mechanical, National Electrical, the Property Maintenance Code, Land Use and Development Ordinance, and the Nuisance Ordinance of the city of Brea. We are also, my department is also the staff for the Planning Commission Board of Adjustments and the Architecture Review Board. And we have to present cases also to the code, code enforcement board. So, we have many boards that we deal with on a very frequent basis. I've given you a packet tonight. I hope you get a time to read that. That packet includes a brief description of each of the codes department personnel, task, and accomplishment. And I wanted just to highlight that Philip Hurt just recently received his one- and two-family inspection status. He has completed the testing for that, and he is now a certified one- and two-family with the state, and he's working on his commercial. Hopefully, by the middle of this year, he'll have some commercial inspection status. Also included in there that I gave you was a document entitled Codes and Planning Department: Introduction and Operation. This briefly describes the daily operations and processes of the codes department. I've also included a diagram of a code violation abatement process. Also putting here are some graphs depicting trends of permits issued over the last few years. What I did was, it took about a ten-year period. Over the last ten years, construction has added about two-hundred-and-thirty-two million, two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars to the economy. Under the work quantities, now, things have really slowed down since the economy's slowed down. We've, we've not seen the, you'll see it here in a minute on the graphs, but we haven't seen the trends that we saw two or three years ago. But under the current work quantities of today, the current staff is able to handle the load. But if we were to go back to the trends before the economic downturn, additional personnel would certainly be required, because we're actually short from what we used to be. But we've been getting by with what we have. We do anywhere from fourteen-hundred to two-thousand inspections a year. Each house gets about eight inspections or nine. And that is if the contractor does everything right the first time. If we have to go back, it even adds to that. Here's some of the graphs. You can see what happened back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, and then you can see the trends start coming down. Two thousand and ten was a little bit better than two thousand and nine was our lowest point. This is just single-family homes. That's all this is, just single-family homes. These were permits issued. Also, this is all other permits. You'll see the, the one that sticks up really high there is new apartment buildings or multi-family structures. We had a, a great tremendous of those built back in the years. Started about two thousand and four, went all the way up, peaked about two thousand and six, and now it's, it's been on a downward trend over the last two or three years. But as you notice there at the end, we're starting to see another uptick of that. And then, then the other lines are commercial and business and duplexes and industrial. Pretty much industrials shut off about two thousand and eight. We haven't really issued very many permits since then on industrial. That's kind of slowed down. There are some things that are looking at us, as Tom may bring up, but, but right now, those things and commercials also dip down to the bottom. We're not doing much commercial or much industrial at this time. I expect it to pick up, though. Again, this is electrical permits that we issued. Each one of these represents about three inspections, each permit we issued. So, you can see how many numbers of inspections we do a year. So, this is a trend from about two thousand to two thousand and ten. I took last year's numbers and just put them down here to show you how many permits were issued in each category and the, kind of the value. So, last year alone, two thousand and ten, we did about almost a little over twenty-one thou, twenty-one million dollars worth of construction work in the city. That's actually down quite considerably. Then here's the chart I was telling you about. This looks crazy, but this is if we have a violation of one of our ordinances or nuisance ordinance, or let's just say it's weeds, grass, rubbish, whatever. This process, we did this a few years ago, so we'd understand what we have to go through. There's so many things that are required of us, making proper notification. We got to do investigations on the property to make sure we're talking to the right person. You only deal with the owners. You can't deal with rental renters, because the owner's ultimately responsible. That's, that's just the way it is. I mean, it's their property. And we do contact the rentals, but ultimately, it's the owner's responsibility. And then you'll see that if, if, if you don't get it abated, it goes one way. If you do get it abated, it goes another. So, there's a very complicated situation. People say, "Well, why can't you do it a little faster?" Well, there's just certain restrictions, certain notification requirements, and certain things we have to live up to. And as a footnote, I am very proud to say that over the last twenty years, twenty-two years, I've also been afforded the opportunity to work with the administration on several projects. I have been project manager for several of our projects around town. I added a month the other day just to see how many projects we've done, and we were approaching fourteen million dollars just in projects that the city's done over the last about twenty years now. But I'm privileged to have worked in those capacities also. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Van Winkle.
What percentage of your time is spent with the new construction phase of the work as opposed to the code violation issues? Would, just an estimate?
How much of my time or my staff's?
Yeah, the department.
I, I can keep one person full-time with nothing but just nuisances. As I, matter of fact, beginning in about, right now, we're a little slow, because the wintertime, it is a little slow in the nuisance department. Starting around March, all the way up until about November, we'll have anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred complaints, and these are actually complaints that we receive. We don't, we're not even going out and being proactive, and that's something I would like to do, is find things before we actually get a call on them. But that's things that we have to handle, and it takes several hours just to handle one of those. You've got to investigate to find out who owns it and that kind of stuff, and then you've got to go through a notification process, and then you've got to wait on them, then you've got to go back through another notification, and then you finally get to the point that you can have it either abated, or you may have to take them to the code enforcement board and get an order. For instance, I've got eight structures in the city right now that need to be demolished. We've got them under condemnation. But in order to get them condemned, I have to give them a certain amount of time. Then I have to take it before the codes enforcement board and get an order from them to have it torn down. So, things take time sometimes. People, I know that's hard to understand, but it does take time.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Who was your predecessor that predicted you'd only last a year?
David White. Was it White? David?
How long did he last?
He lasted a year, and the one preceding him was a year and a half, and the one preceding him was about two years.
Congratulations.
A rough town, buddy. Way to show 'em, Dale.
Do it once, and they both left at the same time.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Schrader, the department head for the GIS and land survey department. Didn't realize till late this afternoon that we were going to be a little autobiographical, but my educational background includes a bachelor's degree in education, followed by a degree in land surveying technology from Wisconsin Technical College. I've sat for the exam and been awarded a land surveying license in Kentucky, Tennessee, and West Virginia. And it doesn't seem possible, but I've now have around thirty years' experience in land surveying and approximately twelve in GIS. I have only one staff member, my assistant Jared Patterson, and Jared is a graduate of Brea College, and he's our geoprocessor and survey technician. He's accomplished at GIS software, computer aided drafting software, and the use of land surveying instrumentation. Our department is unique, at least in my opinion, in that we function as both the GIS department and the land surveying department. I think we're one, I think we are the only municipality that I know of that has a GIS department with the land surveying services available with it, because we have a licensed land surveyor on staff as well as surveying equipment and surveying software. GIS stands for Geographic Information System. It's not a common term to a lot of people. It basically means digital mapping with data underlying the features of the map. So, you can query based upon geographic information. You can find out how many people live here. You can, you can extract an Excel spreadsheet of street addresses for a certain precinct or district, that sort of thing. Some of our GIS functions, using our GIS capabilities, we are able to answer questions such as whether a parcel is inside of city limits and therefore subject to city taxes, what school district a parcel is in, what land use zone, what utility district, what voting district, et cetera. One of the things we do is maintain a printable street map with an index of the streets. This is our master trail plan that we developed and maintain. It, it helps, it's a planning tool for our shared-use paths and hiking trails in the city. We maintain the official zone map and keep it updated for the planning commission, as well as the future land use map. For the planning commission, it's an integral part of the comprehensive plan. We provide exhibits to different departments and boards and commissions, such as this exhibit that we did for the Board of Adjustments. We also work with the county in making sure that all our street center lines We also work with the county in making sure that all our street center lines and street addresses are available to the 911 dispatching. We maintain an inventory of city-owned real estate, as well as a map of that real estate. We provide the police department with services such as patrol zone mapping. We provide the street department with a snow removal map. We provide the parks department with such things as event maps, ball field staking, and so on. We provide the tourism department and Chamber of Commerce with festival maps. And we provide the, our economic development department, Tom McKay, with exhibits whenever he is looking at trying to market a piece of industrial property to a new client. On the land surveying side of our department, we use our land surveying capabilities to perform boundary surveys, topographic surveys, construction surveys. Whenever the city annexes a tract of land, Secretary of State requires that before that annexation is legal, it must be mapped, and that map certified by a licensed land surveyor, and there must be a legal description of that property certified by a surveyor. And so, of course, we provide that to the Secretary of State whenever we annex. We do such things as boundary and subdivision plats. This is an example where we surveyed the boundary of our new Menelus Road Industrial Park and then subdivided out 50 acres to sell to the campus schools. We do plat reviews and surveying reviews for the planning commission whenever a plat or a development plan is submitted to the commission. And one more interesting things that we do, never thought I would get into, we've helped the police department with accident reconstruction and crime scene reconstruction, and have served as an expert witness for the prosecution in some of these cases. And we are setting benchmarks. These are our control points that give people a relative elevation to flood hazard areas so that they know how far their house is in or out of the flood hazard area. This is another project we've worked on. It's the Indian Fort Trail. It's a conceptual plan that's helped guide our construction and path for that. And in addition to that, we do various construction and drainage projects, such as design and stake curb and gutter, staking of storm sewer and sanitary sewers, ball fields, et cetera. And that's a synopsis of the GIS department, if there are any questions.
Questions for Mr. Schrader.
And you currently work in with Sandy Camargo to develop a plan in terms of our stormwater runoff and drainage issues, and is that correct?
That's right. We, we sent out a questionnaire a couple, three years ago and developed a spreadsheet with all our stormwater complaints, trying to prioritize them. And Sandy Camargo is well-known in the state. He's with CDP Engineers, as Mr. Stone mentioned earlier, and we're working on a overall stormwater plan. Stormwater tends to be one of our major areas of problem.
And with the population increase that we're anticipating, we're showing our senses, we may be compelled to have a plan together, is that?
The EPA may, may compel us to become what they call Phase 2 compliant, which includes not only managing your stormwater from the point of view of where does that stormwater go, but also how clean is that stormwater when it gets to the creeks?
Okay. And Paul, another question is, if the public wanted a map, could they come to your office and get something or?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. We're on the second floor of City Hall, clearly marked. We're a small enough town. Come upstairs, ask for Paul or Jared. And if you need any kind of map, if the council needs any help in distinguishing anything in our city, please feel free to come by, citizens as well.
Thank you.
At some point, you ought to request a business card from Paul, and you'll see that on it, he's got the latitude, longitude, location of his office.
Thank you.
You bet.
I didn't know I could hand these out beforehand, so we'll give them to you now. You've got a nice couple.
Thank you very much. You're all right.
This will be the last report for tonight.
Thank goodness.
The rest, the other departments, the rest of the story will be next meeting.
As most of you know, I'm Tom McKay. I've been around Berea for a long time. I served on the city council for about four terms back in the 80s and 90s. Spent a lot of time, not in this chamber, but in the other chamber. I'm married to Bonnie McKay. We've been married about 43 years. We have a son, Thomas Ashley, who is a pharmacist at Kroger's. His wife Lori teaches at Berea Community School, and I am the proud grandfather of Miss Amelia Ryan, which is about six and a half weeks old. I was hired about four years ago to do business development for the city of Berea. My office is located at 204 North Broadway, Suite 20, very end of the hall. My duties include industrial as well as retail recruiting. Berea has two industrial parks, one in Mayde Road, the other one is at Menelus. And one of the duties that I've been doing is trying to purchase property along the Mayde Quarter over to Menelus Road. Eventually, that will give us a possibly additional industrial property, but the big thing is, is that will give us a road over to the Menelus Road area, which would eliminate that old wooden railroad bridge that is so dangerous and we can't provide fire protection for the people in that area over there. Our Menelus Road Industrial Park is over 319 acres. It'll soon be the home of the new Madison County Middle School, and there's a picture, hopefully, and I didn't know if I got a picture of the new middle school in there or not. But, and hopefully then, the future home of the new Berea Vocational Technical School. We've donated 10 acres for that, and hopefully, that will be built in my lifetime before I leave here. Again, I recruit industrial. So far, I've been very fortunate to be able to bring three manufacturing industries to Berea, three industrial distribution facilities, and three industrial sorting companies. Now, all of these are not located essentially out in the industrial park. 76 Boulevard got most of the sorting companies and part of the industrial distribution. A couple of the manufacturing industries are located in the industrial park, DCUSA being the newest industry out there. And we have a contract that is working on 20, on a one-acre tract at the corner of Menelus and a railroad track there, that little flat section there right beside the railroad tracks. Part of my other duties is to meet with the existing industries. I try to do that on a quarterly basis. I feel like that's very important, that we know what the industry's doing. They know what we're doing. We can sit down with them, discuss any problems they have, any kind of problems that we may have with them. We can get that out in the open and work that out pretty quickly. I recruit retail business. My goal is to bring enough retail to this town to create an atmosphere where people are here and shopping. Right now, we've, we've not been very successful, but Tractor Supply just broke ground yesterday, and hopefully, that's the start of something big in the area. We have been successful in bringing some retail to Berea. Walgreens, the VA Clinic, a new strip center on 25 North, Marty Carney Strip Center in front of Walmart, development of the old Walmart with Burgess Dome, Ace Hardware, Bank One, the Restore Store, Tractor Supply, the strip center on Plaza Drive. That added five businesses down through there. And Exit 77, their strip centers have added nine businesses. One of my other duties is help see the running, the day-to-day operation of the Broadway Center where I'm located. We have five entities that rent from the city down there. We have Kentucky Bureau of Investigation, CAECO, Chamber of Commerce. We have a psychologist, in fact, we have two psychologists ring from us down there. Projects that we're working on, and I have those listed for you. Most of those people don't want their names out in the public. My job is kind of a secretive-type job. Nobody wants me to tell anybody anything until they're ready for the announcement. Makes my job very difficult because most people don't know what I'm doing after that. One of the things I did when I came here, I stood out in front of Walmart for about four or five days trying to find out what retail the people wanted that was coming in, some of the people that shopped in Berea. I spent four days. The first day, I didn't put a Berea shirt on, didn't have any information telling me, and I got cussed about 10 or 12 times. So I learned real quick, if you want to do something like that, you need to identify yourself. But I, I was able to create a book, and anytime you'd like to stop by and look at that, I've created a book with all the statistics and what people would like to see. What's the number one thing was a supermarket. Number two was clothing stores. And we're working very hard to try to bring that. I also do the entrepreneurial center in Berea. Since I've, since Eastern left a couple of years ago, I've worked in that capacity, and we've worked with 15 people. We've had at least three people that has achieved some sort of success. James Mays, which used to work for Churchill Weavers, is now in business for himself in Lexington and all places. He used our center to get the information and ended up in Lexington working over there. I had another gentleman that catered Mr. Stone's daughter's wedding, and he's, I've worked with him. And one of the other people I worked with was Jerry Price to get his bike shop open. He took a job down at Toquico and found that it was much more practical to work at Toquico than it was to try to labor in his own business, so. And then I also worked with the mayor and the city administrator in pricing property and access, assessing the usability of that property. Any questions?
How many employees will Tractor Supply have?
Tractor Supply will probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 18 people. Yes, sir.
Other questions for Mr. McKay?
Like to invite any of you down to meet with me, see what I'm doing, and if you've got any ideas that would help make this job better or make Berea better, just holler at me, okay?
And Tom, the economy hit you on some of that stuff, didn't it?
Yes, sir, it sure did. Loews was a typical example. We went through months and months and months with Loews and jumped through hoops and did just about everything we needed to do, and then all of a sudden, the, the economy went sour and Loews decided to pull out. We're still in contact with Loews. The gentleman that I work with, Mr. Gray, I talk to him about once a month to make sure that we're still in the running if the economy picks back up and Loews decides to start opening stores again. Right now, they're, all they're doing is remodeling. They're not doing any new stores at all. So we're still on the list if and when the economy rebounds, so.
So is it fair to say that there's reasonable property available for
Yes, sir.
small businesses that you find that want to come here?
I keep an inventory of all the property, available property in Berea. And when I get a prospect into town, whether it be a broker or whether it be a company itself, I take them and show them each individual piece of property that, you know, even whether it suits them or not, I try to show them everything in Berea. I keep a catalog of every available piece of property and every building that is available, including Chestnut Street. No matter where it's at, you know, I try to find fits for that.
Thank you, Mr. McKay.
All righty. Thank you all.
That concludes Part 1 of the initial orientation. My comments. I just have a few matters. We received a thank you note, which I'll read. Thank you note from Tom Chapman. Thank you and those of the Streets Committee and workers who so quickly responded with quick and accurate signage for the 15 mile-per-hour signs on Crescent Drive. It is our hope that this at least will be something we can point visitors to and use as a reminder for our own driving on Crescent and other streets in Berea. Tom Chapman. And I received a letter from Gary Irwin. Mr. Mayor, please accept this letter as my official notification as we are moving to Port Angeles, Washington. I wish to resign my position on the Berea Planning Commission effective December 31. And he thanks, thanks the city for the opportunity to serve. And so, with this vacancy, we have a nine-member board with this vacancy. I'd appreciate if you know of anybody who might want to serve to make a suggestion on nominations.
You want those names for the next meeting, or is it, you have a time frame there?
Just whenever you get them. Email me, call me, you know, in the next week or so. We have a number of committee appointments that need to be made this new year, so we'll be moving into that mode pretty soon. Mr. Fields asked about the filling of vacancy created by Mr. Baker. We have an information packet for the council, which will be distributed to give you some background information. Ms. Kirby and Mr. Belando received their copies of information on record retention and open meetings. I believe you got that? Did you get that?
Yeah.
And the governor's office requires that we, the city, receive receipts that you got that information, you all, as well as any new appointments to boards and commissions, and maintain those on file. So if you wouldn't care to fill out and sign those receipts and give them back to Cheryl, we'd appreciate that. And lastly, have any of you all had the opportunity to read through or review that economic development material that I handed out to you? If you, do you have any comments or thoughts?
Not yet.
About whether we would want to have a work session on it or move further, or do you?
I think we should have a work session on it.
Yeah. So would the council like us to then organize a work session to discuss this economic development concept?
I think so.
Very good. We'll do that. That concludes my comments. Council comments? Mr. Fields?
Yes, I'm very sorry to see this chair empty here. Howard Baker was a great man, a very fine councillor of the city. We'll miss him quite a bit. My condolences to his family. And I'd like to thank everyone out there who voted for me, showed some confidence. I'll do the very best I can for Berea and the city of Berea and the entire area here. Thank you.
I have none, Mayor.
Mr. Wedges?
Mr. Eric, I'll echo what Truman said. Thank all the people who voted for Truman.
Mr. Bell?
Those are two good men.
No comment. Ms. Kirby?
I would like to join Mr. Fields in his comments about Mr. Baker, extend our sympathies to his family, and to thank the department heads for the informative sessions this evening. That was very, very helpful. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burnside?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, I'd like to extend my condolences to Mrs. Baker's family, and Howard was a good friend and will surely be missed by many as well. And to welcome the, the new people to the council, Diane and Rich, and Truman back. Glad you're, glad you're here and look forward to working with you as well. Also, I think the, the mayor had alluded to the fact of Mr. Baker's seat and that we need to fill that position. So if you don't mind, the mayor had passed out a handout. It's called, got Chapter 6 at the top. At the bottom, you'll see Kentucky League of Cities, City Official Legal Handbook, Fill in Vacancies. The understanding is that the council is permitted by law to fill that appointment. And I would like to encourage us to turn our attention to having a work session fairly soon so we can identify what we think this council may need in making an appointment. It is up to the council to do that. There's not a lot of parameters about who has to be considered in that conversation or in that appointment. And so, what I would hope that we would do, we have 30 days to do that. I think the clock's probably started ticking today on that. January 1. And so, we really need to, to move forward in establishing some process in submitting names that we could eventually reach some consensus on to submit, to fill that appointment. So if the council is willing, I would suggest and encourage us to have a, a meeting here next week where we can begin that process and hopefully have a name or someone in place that we can recommend or make that offer to by the meeting on the 18th of this month.
Here's, next week, 6:30.
Well, I haven't